Kattodiyae parisutha namathukumai mundavada
In the God's holy name be glorified
Ebeshirukkila nerubam aaramadigaram 12, 13 vasanangal vasipum
Epistle to Ephesians chapter 6 verse 12 and 13 For we risen north against flesh and blood but against principanities against powers against the rulers of the darkness of this world against spiritual wickedness in high places wherefore take unto you the whole armour of God that he may be able to withstand in the evil day and having done all to stand
Enenil maamsathodu, retthathodu mallan turaythanangalodu, adigarangalodu, iprabandhitin andhakara lohathi padigalodu, vaanu mandalangillu polnada avigalin seynagalodu, namakkuporatam undu, aagaya thingunali le avigale ningal edirkavum sagalathayum seydu mudithavarkala inerkavum thrani unnavakal aavukum badikke devan de sarvayidavarkathayum eduthukolungal
Kattodiyae parisutha namathukumai mundavada
In the God's holy name be glorified
Ebeshirukku Paul thande nerubthe 7 mududu aviyale evappatu chilakariyengalai teeli vaga chollukedar
And Paul was urged in his spirit and was clearly mentioning to the Ephesians
Indha ulakathile namakkupalavidamana poratangal undu enrue avath teeli vupaduthukedar
And he was giving a clear information we are having many struggles in this world
Andha poratam ningal maamsathodu, retthathodu banni, ongeladee valkayi ningal veenakki udakkudadum ennum avath sutikaathukedar
And he is depicting that you should not make your life in vain by wrestling against the flesh and blood
Indi kinaam pisasadu poradavindiyavurgal maniviyodu, pillagalodu, purushanodu, samudhayathodu, prachanegalodu naam poradikkundukurav
And we who want to wrestle against Satan but we are wrestling against our family members, our society, our children, our churches
Maamisham enbadu maniviyay purushanay kaanvikkarad
The flesh shows husband and wife
Rattam enbadu sagodara sagodrigal pillagale kaanvikkarad
And blood shows brother sister and children
Indi kanae ka viswashigal oolirukalum indha maamsathodu, retthathodu, tangudee valkayile poradikkunde pisasadu poradukarade vaanamandalangalillu polnangalodu poradukarade koraitukundargal niruthi vuttar
Today many servants of God and believers and they were wrestling against his blood flesh and blood and have stopped fighting with Satan and with the rulers of the powers on top and spiritual wickedness in high places
This pisas, ongaladivat pandadhe ningal unaravendam
And this you have to understand that Satan is diverting you
Ah, neenallavan than
And you are good
Nallavu avikuruyamanjan than
You are a good spiritual person
Onakkupisasa merkkollu adigarama urukarade
And you have power to overcome Satan
Varangalurukarade
You have gifts
Vallamayurukarade
Have power
Onakkathraaniyurukarade
You have ability
Anal neenavani eduthu porada mudiyadabodi
But you are not able to resist against him
Onnudee valiyay avath thiripivudukedar
He is diverting your ways
Onveetla prachaneyakondurum mududu
When your problems is brought to your family
Onne kudumbathila prachaneyakondurum
When he is bringing the problems to your family
Onne velasalangala prachanegal kondurum
When he brings problem to your job spot
Onde saavikulaprichanegal kondurum
When he brings problem among the church
Neenappanugirai
What you are doing
Ilavatal naan ennapanugirai
What I am doing
Naam avigalodu porada arambitthu vudukarav
And we are wrestling against all those things
Namakindha problema solve pandruthuke namakneeram podala
And we don't have sufficient time to solve these problems
Adukaha alukarav
We are crying for it
Adukaha bovasambodharav
We are fasting
Adukaha manlu katturav
And we are striving hard for it
Ippriyee pisas vaanamandalangalillu polnada aviyang seynagalodu, iprabandhitin andhakara lohathi padigalodu, turaythanangalodu, adigarangalodu, namiporasiyavudadamel avan veerupadigila thiripivudukedar
And devil is not allowing to wrestle against the principanities against powers rulers of the darkness of the world against spiritual wickedness of the high places is diverting to other ways
Adanaka ebeshis sobikya avath Paul eludumbududu
So when Paul writes to Ephesians church
Ongeludee itthom maamsathodu, retthathodu mallan
And your wrestling is not against the flesh and blood
Ah, neenka vaanamandalangalillu polnada aviyang seynagalodu poradungal
And you have to wrestle against the spiritual wickedness in high places
Aagayaal
So
Nengal thingunali le avigale ningal edirkavendam
Wherefore you have to resist against the evil days
Avath varapogurad
Is coming to come
Agarkumunbaga nee sagalathayum seydu mudikavendam
And before that you have to accomplish everything
Indraya message sagalathayum seydu mudippadu
And today's message is you have to accomplish everything
Sagalathayum seydu mudikamal naam meela poy nikke mudiyaad
And without finishing or fulfilling everything and we cannot go up
Or ejamman oru velakkaranakkhu oru velayakuduthukedar
A master has given a work to the servant
Andha velayi seyyama avan poyinnana avan prathivalane peramudiyad
If he did not do the work and he could not get the reward from him
Madhalan naan sonnadu cheydiyaa
And he first asks whether you have fulfilled the work which ever entered you
Oulyamo jiviyamo
Either ministry or life
Saadhanigalo padagamanak sailgallo
Or challenging situations or translucent situations
Yeduva irundaallo nee andavukappar naan sonnadu chenchiyaa
And whatever it may be the Lord asks you, where have you fulfilled what I have given to you
Naan sonnadu seydiyangradha than kostin
And that is a question to you, have you fulfilled what I have given you
Ningadukka palakarnangalum, palak vishyengalayum, vitthiasangalayum nige cholligita varal
And you can give some reasons and can give some different kind of situations if you have gone
Naan sonnadu chenchiyaa adha kostin
And the question is have you accomplished what have told you
Ah, devan kodukarapramanangal, kattalagal, avarudi uttavugal, anithum, bhaaramanavegal allah
All the lost attitudes and all the commandments is given is not partiality
Yesu chollukedar, enudade sumayi appadi pathad
And what he says, how is my burden
Meduvaanadu, lakkuvaanadu mayanas
Is light and easy
Andavu vandu sumappadurukaraya barathanam meel summatthurukarad
And the Lord does not give more burden that we cannot able to burden
Tangakkudada shodanaila unne kodupi niruthukarad
He is not taking you to the trials that you cannot contain
Neen onakkeneen sonnara adasy
What he is telling you, you must fulfill it
Nige police nee patti gachana
When you look into the police
The traffic police niipanga
I can see the traffic police
Avangalukken oru area undu
And they have some certain area
Adathandi avangal kailavakamdiyad
And beyond that they cannot cross and they cannot
Avanga pottupan, ninga ninga maindrotla peeparunga, idhi indha edathuk, indha police ellake uddpatad Adukadutti oru payananjadila accidentana gudai ivan avlla varamada
And when it is a limit is given to them and beyond that limit and they cannot come and clear after the car accident
Onakkadevan enna sonnara angradhe nee mallak confirmpan
First you have to confirm what the Lord told you
Adu onna arkala, renda arkala, muna arkala, yala arkala, pattha arkala, onudhey avikuruyal aleipukka abishayidukka darisunathukke atthonamai, neeninnana kariyathachyennu, abidino oru porupadhe devan onkayil koduthukedar
It may be one or two or three, whatever it may be and he have given you a responsibility, it may be the concern of this spiritual things or to the people
Onray seydu mudithavarkalindu chollavil
And so the Lord not say they have accomplished a one
Sagalathayum seydu mudithavarkala avarkumunbaga nirkum badikke
And they perform everything and they are able to stand before him
Sagalathayum seyyama, nee manshakumarankum unnalapoy nikke mudiyaad
And having done all and you cannot stand before the son of man
Bible enna chollukedarade
What the Bible says
Manidhakumarankum unbaga nirka, ningal paatharavangalai marungal
And you be wicked, the particle is to stand before the son of man
Chuma poi manshakumarankum unnalapoy nikke mudiyaad
You cannot stand before the son of man simply
Sagalathayum seydu mudithu, manshakumarankum unbaga nirka, ningal paatharavangalai maramudiyam
And you must be worthy to stand before the son of man having done all
Ah, vasigya, sagalathayum, manshakumarankum unbaga nirka, ningal paatharavangalai
Luca 236, 36 Aagaya initha ambavikupoguray avigalukkalam, ningal tappi, manshakumarankum unbaga, nirka, paatharavangalai ennapaduvathiruke, yappadudum jabamannay vilithirungal endha
Varunga, manshakumarankum unnalal neen ellathu mudichitupoy nikkeno
And you must be worthy to stand before the son of man accomplishing everything
Indha ota modinjaparag nee avarkumunnalapoy nirpay
At the end of the reason, he will stand before him
Apa nee devanukum unnalapoy nikkenun chunnan, onakkuchonnadala clear pannidiyan kapar
If you need to stand before God and he will ask you, have you fulfilled or have cleared out whatever he has said you
Ortha maratha vedikitturana
And one cut the trees
Apo oru ejamman andhadathu, andhadathu cross pannipana
A master crossed the place
Avainnooral avpoyitukedar
And he was another person, he crossed the area
Oraga vedikitturana
And still, still he was cutting the trees
Vedikitturana, ninga patti genna, orusalallai edathu paattukittlappaduvaaga, edathu rhymes mari soluvaga, padukinkidana
And somewhere they are cutting the trees and used to sing some song or rhymes
Nappadagu thallumbodo oru paattu paduva
Even when rowing the boat, they say some song
Nammangallai athumbodo oru paattu paduva
And when they are taking, loading the trees, they used to sing a song
Arey mari, ivan ennatiyav taniyanenidu, pesikidhey vedikitturana
So he was standing alone and he was singing some song
Veeruthu viruthuthu poi vedikitturana
And he was in sweats, he was tired and was cutting the trees
But aalay illa ivan edhov pesara
And he was, no one was there but he spoke something
Ivan konyukurundukavunichav, enna raan solrad
And he listened very keenly what he was telling
Ivan vedikitturukarad, ana yaar esikitturukarad, aadhamay esikitturana
And he cut the trees but still he was scolding Adam
Maratha vedikitturumbodi, yaar esikide vedikarad
While cutting the trees and he was
Indhalan, neen chenchitappala than ennak enna vatiyese, innikinaa vedikavatranan
And because of the fault which was committed on that day, I was still cutting the trees
Indhalan, neenikattappu seyyamaranidu, neenikanaa impitirpa, devanudee thoottathla, abdi alaha, maygimayodu, chaandavudee sattathakettu, yappudi irundupan, indha aadham oru velangada oral, orathanthappu pandunala, yellanaasama pochine, ivan thanaav polamitturana, adha andha ejamman patha
Because of one committed such sin and mistakes and we are still doing laboring hard and cutting the trees and he was speaking among himself and the master was looking into him
Apa avantupi nee ejamman pesna
And the master speak to him
Cheri onakkaverekavatra velayilla, mesimplana velakudukutumana
And can I give you a simple work that not able to
Ramnaalad
And he said, it is good
Jappathakattar kettaranan
And he said, the Lord asked my prayer
Okay, ivan veetla vanchala
And he said, you come to my house
Avan veetla vichu koonal saapadukupadu pottu, avanukka nallat training kuduthu
And he cared him by giving food and gave a good training
Eunde andha veetukku manager, managera madiyada
And he made him a manager to the house
Full control ivan kayil kudutha
And every control was in his hands
Okay, pellam kuduthutu
Giving all the control in his hands
Kurigappattam adangal kalitha varanay
After the appointed month
Ornalavanchona
He said to them
Na oru pakathu oru, nal nal preyanam poyinti uruke
I want to go for a journey for four days in the next world
Na poyittu varavarki, indha pettiyamattum patthrama vachike
Until I come back and must keep the suitcase safe
Naavaro varakke, enniseyavda, charandukarundu enniseyavda, pakavanta, nee vachikav
And do not open till I come, you keep it safe with you
Veda allam padukke, ellamay onkayiladha aruke, naa poyitvaranidu
And look after the houses and everything, and everything is in your hands, I will go
Ramnaaladu, ninga poyitvaanga, naa padukarav, fulla control pannikarantaa
And he said, I will take control over everything, it is good, you can go
Ornalache
After one day
Ambaruganallarana
And he was good
Anavulu gulav oru poradam
But still he have some wrestling inside
Moolu sottayum kayil kuduthukar
And the whole possession is given in his hands
But indha pettiyum kayil kudutha
He gave the suitcase also in his hands
Indha naa indha pettiyidu ida odidupara
Will I take the briefcase
Appidin indha pettikul enna daarka, tharakadan vara solitu veta
And he said, you should not open the suitcase
Alada, ivanakkay mind operateman aramchitsi
And mind started to operate in him
Namono thikittu varapurad
I am not going to take
Adukalukko kodi kanakal, namay eduthu poparad
Even if a crow's of money, I am going on to take it
Chiri, pathan, tarandu patha, tharakaradu velala, opaladhal irukke
And it is not, it has already opened
Adu onnu periyal lock pannay, number lock kuduthutu, avan chollamakollamalam pogalad, chummal lock pannirka, idhavur periyaa, idhin solitthi, indhal ensiyamadanta, vanta nee, thangavakadantuvitaan
A locker, number lock, nothing was found in then by the suitcase and he said, you should not open the briefcase
Ivanakkutthannampatthu periyi nichya, nammo oru eduthutu varapurad
And he had a certainty about him, I will not take this
But tharakakudadu, ivan chunnan
But why he said, she not open
Nambekele, ivanamela
And you don't have confidence upon me
Cheri onnu seyoo, charandutte nindikala, moodiala, ivlada naa, terindikala, ivlada naa
And we can just know what it is inside, we can open and close it
Time vendadu, charandutta
And time came and he opened
Charandavotane, pettikul idhun veli, odiyabitsi
Soon after he opened, something ran out of the suitcase
Town vartti, adhavartti pidigipana, adhu jeevanukuthappi oru eli parandu poyidichiga, veli odiyabitsi
And the rat escaped out of life, he came out of the suitcase
Ivan kilpadiyaranan, ivan yappudiyurukarad, ivan aadhan chenchitappu, aadhamasolitthukarad, ivan yaarunkaradakandupidikunna, avan avlabiriyasuitkeshlo oru eliyapudichu ulavachi, laakpanikayil kuduthupana
To identify who he was and he made the rat keep in the suitcase and locked it, identify whether he obeys or not
Ipo kattalay miriyaj
Now he transcribes the commandment
Eliyav, olnadu, eliyav, palliyav, onumeyav unkithiriyala
And you don't know
Ivan charandavone, addichaj jumpla, ivanakkonumeyav puriyala, ivan thakachta, ipe pettiyathirundupada, onumela, eda empty pettiyav, ulle ennatiyav pottukuttukata, avadi pidiyaj, avlada, aduktha second, payaranya mariyata
He was astonished what was inside the suitcase, he don't know what came, ran out of the suitcase and he was astonished and stand very threatening
Naalal kalichivandari ejamman
After four days, master came
Varanmadhe, agathin alakay, edhala terindhirche, amohathil terindhirchi, side, paya, failaita
His face is an index of the mind, his beauty was known in his face
Onavani alla, abidirukinara, ivanna, papa, mulichinigana
And he was astonished and
Suitcase engayana
Where was, where was the suitcase
Ayah, adu vandhe, ennapan, aramutu sol
And he said, what you do with it
Ibrithcharande, mishites
I opened something missed
Idhi yaar chenchitappu
And who committed this mistake
Yaar chenchitappu, naan chenchitappu, okay, nee chenchitappukke, ipavittu vittu veliibo
And he said, whose mistake, it is my mistake, go out of my house
Onakkunna kuduthu periyakattalay kadayad
I did not give you a great commandment
Indha kaniyay pujsikkum nalil sagave, sabayna, avanukuthunna, avan undutta, innikini itna, nootandukku, peragu, aadham chenchitappu, engappan chenchitappu, engamma enne, sariyapaththudukala, engappan enakkisambalichivikala, enakka, avada, idhalala nee pesada, oh, nee enna seyda, thothidiya, edeponch
And now you have failed my commandment and you can go out
Idhemari, namakkukuduthudala oru chinnakariyanda
And for us, only small matters are given to us
Onnalamudilana, adavankayil kodukavumadhar
If it is impossible, he will not give you any
Apu onnalamudiyadha, onkayil kuduthutara, adhundu tappipogha, oru, shodanayilundu tappipogha, oru, valiyay, avar pokkay undupanduva
If something is given in your hands, if you are not able to carry it and he will make your way to cross over the situation
Illa, oru pokkay undupandli, nam padada, padula padukiduruke
And he will pave the way for you, you would say that I am
Yaar sakthikim, minjila poodu
And it is going beyond my power
Ortharavandu sonnara, yesu vada, adhimapadupadraga, abidina
Once said, I suffered more than Jesus
Naathana, deva dosanallaa chollre, nee, nee deva dosanallaa chollrad, yesu vada, padupadre
And I said, you are blessed
Vinnae enga, yesu siluvela, oru, gatsamane thoottathil, pidiyabattala, twenty-four housele, jeevan bairchina, yirutnala orusham, padadpadupadupadutrad
At the God of Gatsamane, he loved his life and twenty-four hours, I am suffering this suffer
Naan chunnan, yirutnala orusha, nee padu vattalo, andha yirutnala unnarampatta, padukkenisiyad, eeedahaad
Even if you suffer for twenty-four years, but the twenty-four hours of time that he suffered will not be compared to it
Adhee idhee, nee eeedunaya, netthavay, mudiyaad
And you can never equalize the suffering that he had suffered
Kattar onakkun oru target vachirukarad, adhu seydu mudikaravarki, onakkindha bolagathila time, andha time mudiyadukulani, seydu mudikalana, on targetle, nee failure, onakkun, nitthiyaj jeevanle, andha oeyundha panku, karakad
The Lord had a target for you to fulfill in appointed time until you accomplish and the Lord will give you time to fulfill it and only after fulfilling it and you can go and you will have the reward in heaven
Yiruttranda vaisu, patimununal, abidinarana, yiruttranda vaisu, patimununal, onakkukuduthada, nee targetamudichirukano
And you have to fulfill the target which is given in this lifespan, twenty-two years of thirteen days
Yesuukum, mupthimuntra vaisda, time
And Jesus' time was thirty-three and a half years
Ah, andha moontra orusha, oolyathila, oru ensaino, oolyatheseydu mudichya aagano
In three and a half years, we have to accomplish the ministry
Idha mudiyaman, nee uka, yesu ukaadukkides, gatsamane thoottathila, pidahave, indha patharam, ningakkudumanaal, ningattum, hmm, target achieve pandravarki, piddukumaranki, idhee pathada
Until he achieved the target and the son man goes in this way
Avar vandu siluvayshomakarad, indhaalala, odapunidyaad
And he cannot appoint another to bear the cross
Andha oru balida, manithaneipurnapaduthukedar
Only that one sacrifice is perfecting the man
Apa yenakkun, onakkun, oru target vachirukarad
And the Lord have a target for you and me
Adha, andha sagalathayum, neeun, naanun, seydu mudikad
And we have to accomplish everything
Adhala devan, thaivudachan, neemepanamadhar
And the Lord will not have any partiality in it
Ongalapillapadikala, neen enna seyriyaa
And your children is not studying what you do
Ningalavane, fees katringa
You are paying the fees
Ningalavane, vannukkakupanangkatringa
And you are paying the fees for that
Ningalavane, uniform vayinkudukringa
And you are getting the uniform
Ana neenka, addichikodupi, engolavuttu varinga, padringala, ilia
You are beating and leaving them in the school
School, addichikodupi, talivutvaringala, nallakudungan, solitthu varavaringa
And you're telling, you give them good beating
Yeah
Why
Varinganathal, ongalapillam, moorana arkakudad, nyanaya arkunana, aasapad
The coming days, your children should not be a fool and they should
Adhee poladan, thanudhey, kumaransiluvayasamundhu mudikadongradala, devan, yemayipoldu, naan onnekayivatena chunnan
And the Lord said, for a moment, I have a shaken thee, and the specific purpose of the son took care of the cross
Sagalathayum seydu mudithavarkala inerkavum, adha namudhey thittam
That is his plan that we have to done everything, I will accomplish to him
Eena, avar chenchidellaame, perfecta chenchirka
Because we have done everything so perfectly
Avar ellavachin, namakkadu seydu mudikkum devan
And he is the one who perfected everything for us
57am sangida, renda vasanam chollukedarade, sagalathayum seydu mudikkum devan
And fifty-seven Psalms verse two says, and he is the one who performed everything
38am sangida, 8am vasanam chollukedarade, sagalathayum, avar yenakkadu seydu mudithar, mudiparun, chollukar
And that 138 eighth verse, he says that, and he perfected everything for me
Apa devan onakkum, yenakkum, sagalathayum seydu mudikukum bududu, nee devanukkaasagalathayum seydu mudikavendam
When the Lord perfected, have done everything for you and me and we have to have a desire to accomplish everything for God
Onakkri, yenakkun, devan seyven chunnadha, karakta thittam pannik, karakta seyvar
And the planly, and he is working out whatever the Lord promises that we have to fulfill to you and me
Yesaya, 46, 19, enna chollukedarade
Book of Isaiah, chapter 46, verse 11, what says
Na onakkeneen chunnanadu, seydu mudipen, adhitittam panninen, vasigya Yesaya, 46, 19
Urainchikira, oru pattiyekilakilirundum, ena aalosani, neravit, manjanay, duera desirdan, baravalekara, irukre, adi chunnain, adi neravit, adi thittam panninen, adi seydu mudipen
Andavu solar, varunga, naan chunnan, adachenchimudipan
I have purpose it, I will do it
Thappanala, thaayinala, thopurakkani kaputu, anadaya kadanda, andha yakobai sanditha buludu chunnar, naa onakkuchonnadachyigavarki, naa unnete, unnete, ensiyamada, velagavumada, unnekayivudavumada
One was forsaken and disallowed by father and mother and he said, I will fulfill what I have spoken to you
Onakkum, yenakkum, devan chunnadhe, neravetti, adhitittam pannni, adenerevetti mudipar
The Lord will fulfill everything that concerns you and me and he will plan it and he will work it
Ethanavale, viswasham, ongalavirupi, alia solunga Devan yenakkadu sagalathayum seydu mudipar
The Lord will perfect everything concerned at me
Adha devanudee thittam
That is the plan of God
Avar enna sonnara, adha apriyaseyvar
Whatever he sees and he will accomplish everything
Ala, malayalathal soluvaga, valliyoyo, puliyoyo, maradun, sol
In Malayalam, they say that even the single
Tamalna, oru, urupakilum, andhu urupin, avayav, unkuda, ensiyad, marad
Even the words of the Jordan will never be changed
Onnu samvil, 28amadigaram, 17avasanathai parkumbadu
When we look into first Samuel, chapter 28, verse 17
Onnanalakuma, 28, 17
First Chronicles, chapter 28, verse 17
Kattar ennakkundu, sonnabudiye seydu mudithar, kattar overthariyam gurithu, sonnabudiye seydu mudipar
And how the Lord said, accordingly, he fulfilled it
Andavu chunnadela, remba karakta varvar
And the Lord will come to the place, what he has said unto you
Avar solamadhar, chunnachaeyava, cheyamarekamadhar
And he will not tell you, but if he says and he will not be performing it
Avar soliyum, soliyu, cheyadurupar
And because he is telling, he will not fulfill it
Onakkukolanda taruvan chunnan, kattayan taruvare
If he says, he will keep your child, surely he will give you child
Avar, onakkavela taruvan chunnan, vela taruvare
If he says, I will leave you work and he will give you the
Na unney boshiipen chunnan, boshiipar
If he says, I will nourish you, he will nourish you
Unney annaal muttunkaapen chunnan, kaapar
If he says, I will keep you on that day, he will keep you
Onkodupay sharepen chunnan, naadiyathoraimuthila, unnekodupay sharepar
And if he says that, he will take you to the place and he will take you to the place
Andavu chunnadachyiradukutha, balinaal, andha velay seydu mudichirukedar
And through sacrifice, you have done that work
Eberer, 27, solukedarade
And seven twenty son of
Thanudhey, oray balinaal, sagalathayum seydu muditha
And because of one sacrifice, he accomplished everything
Avikuruyavalkayil vandhrukarade, devanudee janame
And your people of God came to the spiritual life
Avar onakkadu, yenakkadu, ellavatheseydu mudithukum bududu
When he done everything for you and me
Thanudhey jeevanal, thanudhey retthathinal
By his blood
Thanudhey balinaal
By his sacrifice
Thanudhey marnatinal
By his death
Thanudhey uirthaladinal
By his resurrection
Ah, ellavatheseydurukaradu, bola, naamum, avarka, sagalathayum seydu mudithu, nikke vendam
He accomplished everything for us and we have to stand before him, fulfilling everything
Bovasundhey character enna
What is the character of Bovas
Bovasapati nama biblela padikum bududu, nam, manavalanukka, adayalam, yesuukka, adayalamaga, munnadayalamaga, pesukarav
When we are studying about Bovas in the Bible, we are studying as a shadow of the bright room
Ana, Nahomi, avundhey character enna solrad
But what are you telling about the character of Nehoma
Ruthukadana, avundhey character thiriyad
And Ruth do not know the character
Ah, Ruthukondu, bovas yarun, nalathiriyad
And Ruth do not know who is Bovas
Ana, bovasapati, Nahomi kuvar arivirundu
But Nehoma had a knowledge about Bovas
Enna ariv
What was the knowledge
Oru kariyathachunnan, adacheydu mudikam, elayparamata
When he sees something and he will not take rest to fulfill it
Ah, Ruth, 38amadigaram
The 318 of Ruth
Appaludha aval, enmagalay, indha kariyam, ennamay mudiyam enthu, nee ariyamattum poruthiru, andha manjan, injaike, indha kariyathimudikkumun, ilayparamatana, endha
Ebidhi, bovasundhey character enna
What is the character of Bovas
Nahomi solrad, ethniyo, orushangalichu, urukkala, vandavasolrad, enna ona, pathu, pesala, but avanudee palaya, character, avakuthiriyon, avasolrad, indha kariyatheseydu mudikadukamunnalav, venesiyamada, elayparamata, apripatamanchar
Nehoma, who came after many years to the city and he said, for the man will not rest until he finishes the thing that is digging
Ulakathila, elarun soluvaga, sai, alladu Eh, solamadikringa, neenallan, ongunthiriyada Ambethkar solrad, karpi Eh, onrusher, adhithen solrad, porachisayin solrad, ellathu solikudhe, ellaring, gather panikha, adhithu porachisayin
And teach and make a revolution
Innoru vasagarukke, innoru vasagam
Another word is there
Ne, missionarylan solrad
Missionary is used to say this
Enadu Po, ilavatal ensiy, anup
Go or send
Onnu nee missionarya po, ilavana, evanadu poav, avanukka, panathamattani pietere
Go, you as a missionary or send the money who go
Ningal, ethanay, missionarya, thanguriru, ongalal, pohkamudiyavatalam, ningal, missionarya, thangalam, adha, adhenadu, po, ilattan, neen ensiyavna, anup
Go or send, if you are not able to go as a missionary or just as a help them, those are going as a missionary
Innoru pasagarukke, sai, alladu, setthumadi
And there is another saying, and do or you do and die
Do and die, idhak, neen kabaddi velaattla, gudai, idhapotuvichupan
Even in the kabaddi game, they used to do this
Andhapotuvichuma
In the book, they have written the saying
Kabaddilav, oru, poran chunnan, anga, ulaboningana, avay, velayarana, eliyakil, enneli uruk Do or die, sai, ilana ensiy, shav, neen vandu, jayichitva, ilana, chethringiama Kabaddiliyay, indha, viswashathala, vanditthu, parag, namaktha, idhakarakta, borundun, nanikar
And triumph or you do or die, and this is a saying written on his breastplate
Sai, sagalathayum seydu mudhi, ilattat, setthada, adhavelayamudichu
Accomplish everything, do or die and do that to the work
Sai, alladu, setthumadi
Do or die
Adhu da, ulakathila, uru vasap
And that is the saying of the world
Ana bible chollukedarade, sagalathayum seydu mudikam, yenakkumunnalav, vandnikke mudiyaad
And you cannot stand before me, having done everything
Sagalathayum seydu mudipada, devanudee thittam
It is the plan of God to accomplish everything
Ornal, samuvel mulamaga, savulke, indha kariyatheseyi, enrue oru kattalay varukedar
One day to Samuel, to Saul, a commandment was given to him
Ne, amalekere, muchilima, alithu viddu
And you have to destroy the amalekates
Avanvalile, enjanathay, taduthu, neruthunadi, enmanasala, poratamaga, urukedar
And it was striving in my heart, they have come to stone, they have been sacrificed
Enjanathin, preyanathay, taduthaar
And they hindered the journey
Ana, amalekere, bhoomila, iradupidi, nee alithu vuddu
So you have to cut off the amalekates utterly, they should not be on the earth
Avan yenjanath, bayangarama, taduthu vuddan
And he have
Neen indha velayacheyin, soli, savuludda, abishaykammanapattasavulta, oru commandmaari devan kodukrad
And he was giving me as a commandment to the anointed soul, to him
Ne yenakkadu, periyakariyengalasadikavendam
And don't want to achieve a great thing for me
Naan chunnadamattu, nee sey
And do what has said you
Adha yenakkupodu
That is enough
Andavu savulunathle, edirupathadu, adha da
And that is the expectation, the Lord expected from Saul
Onnu samvil, 15amadigaram, naam parkumbadu
When we look into first Samuel, chapter 15
Onnerindu, mune, indha vasanangala, naamidhe parkamudiya
In verse 1, 1, 2, and 3, we can see
Nee idhee, muttup sai
You do this alone
Kattar sonnana, abishaykammaninare, kattodiyasattathakeelum, enrue, onna vasanathle, chola padukedar
And the verse 1 says, and hear the voice of the Lord, I have hearkened to him and do it
Muchilumay, adhim, alithu vidday
Utterly, you destroy them
Ana, naradu, enna
And what happened
Ivanukudutha, kattalay, amalekere, alikadu, onakkupower tarav, vallamatarav, aadkal tarav, nee ellathu, alichirin, solrad
His commandment is, you have to utterly destroy the amalekates, I will give you the people and women for everything
Amalekeneen dal, maamsathin, allamigal, maamsathin, sailgal, maamsathin, sailbadugal, kriyagal
My word for, meaning for amalekates is the powers of the flesh or the words of the flesh or the creatures of the flesh
Ana, yuttagathukupanada, savul, enna panand thirima
But one who went to the battlefield, what is all did
Ivan angapoy, thavaru seyara
And the venthe, he committed a mistake
Vaiipun, nalakadachu
And he got a good chance
Andha rajaavat, taniyadutvastra
And he kept the king as a alone
Kinga, separate pannittha
He separated the king
Yaara, alikadun, chunnanaro, andha talay, talayvana, nindittha, padukathuttha
Whom he have to destroy and he preserved the
Motthatiyav alikadun, chunnan, mudhaltharamana, rendamtharamana, porulkala, alaha, select pannivachikitar
And he selected the first things and important things
Andavu solrad, naan chonnadu, ivan cheyaliy
The Lord said, and he did not obey, what is it
Onnu samvil, 15, 19
15, 11 of first Samuel
Naan savule, rajaavakinadu, yenakkum manastavuma, urukaradu, avan ennevittu thirumbi, envathigal, neravit, amar, phoonan, endha
Ebidiruk Naavunakichunnadu, avan cheyyamapoythaav
And he did not perform what had commanded him
Ana, avan enna solrad
But what he says
Andavu enna solrad
But what
Avan, enavathig, neravitralan, ana, avan enna solna thirima
But what he said
13amadigaram
Verse 13
Samuvel, savulin, niruthiponan, savul, avane, noke, nee, kattaral, aasurudikapattav, kattodiyavathi, neravit, nen, endha
Ivan chunnan, naan chenchimudichitanga, chunnan, andavu solrad, nee seyala, angarad
It's so said unto him, I have performed the commandment of the Lord, but the Lord says, and he did not perform my commandments
Neey seyala, naa, ebri, andavu, neey seyvan, soluvad
And if you did not perform, and the Lord, how the Lord will say, you did not perform
Annegitha, savul, modalladi vangarav
And that is the day, and Saul got first beating
Kattar sonnana, adhapiyasey
If the Lord say, you, you have to obey
Poon chunnan, poyitthurukano
If you see it, you to go, you must go
Ne, vaan chunnan, varanu
If you say, you to come, you must come
Ne, nilan, nikkeno
If you need to stand, you stand
Andavu vandhu, thanudhey, militaryla, seynaila, onne, oru seynai, veeranaha, vathithukarad
The Lord kept you as a warrior in the military hosts
Ne, militaryla urukarad
You are in military
Thandil, seavakamalidikonda, yavunum, pelipukkadutha, alulal, sikikolakudad
And they should not war against entangle, who was going in the thing
Ne, militaryla, rendukittu, nee, kattodiyavathi, nee, miravay, kudad
And staying in the military, and you should not transcribe the commandments of God
Naalukkenal, thawidodu, janangal, shairndargal, avargal, seynayaga, deva, seynayaga, mari nakal, enrue, bible chollukedar
The Bible says, every people, they were gathered with David as a host, and at last, they become the law, host of the law
Palayarpattle, devan, chunnaday, cheyyamudiyada, anegar, rindargal, seydu mudithavralam, anegar, urukkar
In Old Testament, we can see, many accomplish what the Lord have given as commandment to them, and many do not accomplish what the Lord said to them
Yovan, 15amadigaram, yesu siluvela, ellam, mudindhade
In John, chapter 19, the Lord said, everything is
Manithanekkahana, enna, enna, cheyinun, nenachanu, anithi, seydurukarad
And what I need to do for the man, I have accomplished everything for him
Ananaladha, baya, prasangila, solukedarade, sagalathayum, adinadin, kalathil Eh, nerthiay, seydu mudikaradevan
And he had made everything beautiful in its time
Devan vandhu, sagalathayum, karakta, thaitla, sariyaseydu mudipar
And he will do a perfectly in the right time
Ne, ongalapillalaka, abidikarakta, seyriyaa
Are you doing everything correct for your children
Yostu varunga
Think and see
Onne, pillaalaka, onkudumbathuka, onakkaha, onudhey, abishayakathuka, neen enna seydurukarad
For your children, for your family, for your anointing, what you have accomplished
Prasangim, 311, solukedarade, sagalathayum, adinadin, kalathile, avar nerthiay, Englishla, alahaay, seydurukarad
Ecclesiastes, chapter 3, verse 11, it is says in Tamil, and you've done everything beautifully, in English, it is mentioned, he had made everything beautifully
Edhaiseydu mudikavendam
What we have to accomplish
Na, 2, 3, 4 vasanangal, vaththumudikara
I will give you 3 or 4 verses and finish it
Yevayalay, seydu mudikavendam
And what you have to do
Sagalathayum, nusoli, appa, onnill, avundrakadigamana
Is said, everything, not one, but more than one
Ah, adavu sagalamgum, bodu, rendu, mune, kadayad, silakadayad, ellavathee, ne seydu mudikavend
All means not a few things, but you have to accomplish everything
Mudhalavudhu, oru manidam, edhaiseydu muditha
And first word, the man have accomplished
Adiyagama, aaramadigaram, 22amadigaram
Book of Genesis, chapter 6, verse 22
Angeneen, solapotukedarade
What is said there
Noah, appidiyaseyda, devan thanakukatliitupadiyallam, avan seydu muditha
Noah, vukku, oru kattalay, urundada
There is a commandment to Noah
Mudhalavudhu, sagalathayum, seydu mudicha, oru manjan, Noah
The one who was, when, accomplished everything for God, as Noah
Noah vandhu, oru, saatharmanjan, kadayad
And Noah was not a normal person
Avan veliyarangama, patti genna, thanudhey, valkayil, avan, oru, neediman
Outwardly, when we can see, he is a just man
Oru uttaman
He is upright
Devanudhu, sanjarithav
And he was the one who joined with God
Innoru veerupadigila, parkumbadu
Another part, when you see
Devanul, kandala, kribagadetha, oru, manjan
And he was the one who received the grace in the sight of God
Innoru veerupadigila, parkumbadu
And the other parts
Avundhey, kudumbathila, patti genna, oru, peaceful, anakudumb
When you look into his family, if family is a peaceful family
Avanukka, oru, maniv
And he had a wife
Rendu, mune, kadayad
Not one, two, or three
Anegar, kavanga, palayarpattla, rendu, mune, vachirukana Ne, indha, vilundhubanav, allam, padichuvichirupan, olungana, vandupadichuvikumadha, ne
And you will study about the fallen people, but not those who are not fallen from the state
Onkanduka, palayarpattla, kalyanam, abidina, Salem, onnan, thirivam
When you look into New Testament, only Solomon will come
Ilana, yakobu, than thirivam
Or Jacob will come through your eyes
Ayah, aadham, onkutthirliya Why Adam runs not to yours? Moses could not come to you? And could you come to see Joseph? And they all had only one wife. And Noah had only one wife? And looking on the big mirror and see why you having, looking at those who have. And Noah accomplished everything. The Lord given the ministry in his hands to construct an ark. There are two meanings for ark. When his family and another meaning is church. Your family and ark must be taken up. If your church is taken up and if you are not taken up, there is no use. You have to understand the truth in a proper manner. And in the personal life, he is a just man. And he was the one who received the grace in the sight of the Lord. And he was the one who worked with God. At the same time. And he had a peaceful life with wife. And he had three sons. And keeping one son, we are not able to bring them properly. And they are making them to write. And they were telling to all the servants of God to pray for my daughter and son. But they had three sons. And he bring them in a very beautiful way, same calm and. And you were bringing them in a beautiful manner. And the three got married. And the three married, only one wife. And not leaving one and taking away one. All the three daughters and rested in the same house. Here even one daughter-in-law was not staying in the house. All the three daughter-in-law, they stayed in the same house. If they have two daughters-in-law and they will go along each other. The Bible says, "And they did not strike hard or they did not fight among themselves." Between father and mother and son and father and mother, doctor and the law to this, and mother-in-law, there was no quarreling. The whole nation did not enter into the Noah's ark when it was commanded, but all the family members, the doctors and law and the son, and they entered into the ark, such a beautiful life they have maintained. First of all, you have to maintain the ark that is a family. And seven eleven of Hebrews, what it say? Hebrews eleven seven. Eleven seven of Hebrews. He prepared an ark to the saving of the house. First of all, your family is important. Then your ministry, then other things of your life. I am speaking to the believers. And we do not have family. First our life, then our ministry. First for you, the family is important. You may say that I woke up four o'clock and seven o'clock, eleven o'clock, I prayed, there is no fellowship near family, there is no use. And one have to bring up the family, own family in right. And you have to take your child. And you have to mingle with your husband. And for our seven children, you have to bring them in the law. And he was the infant and he was more than a believer. And he was the one who was. And they used to say in Tamil that climbing up the roof, they cannot check. And going in the roof and they cannot catch the hen and going to heaven, how they can go into this paradise? Why for children and husband and ten members in a family, if you are not able to maintain them and bring up to heaven, and how you are able to be perfect and go into heaven? And he prepared an ark to save the house. People of God must accomplish it. It is not a sin that you hurt humble for the peace of your family. It is not sin that you adjust your family. It is not a prestige problem for the husband to obey wife and wife to obey husband. If the two vehicles are crossing the road. If they both are just by giving a bit and they can go smoothly. At one day in south side, I went by car. I drove on that day. A driver believer and servant of God sat near me. I went with very speed. When I am going in high speed. And looking at my high speed and he given an alert bike is showing a light. In a very long distance, he blow a light and he came strike towards me. And I was so angry. I was in ministry. I was very young in age without any fear, I am coming with very high speed. And four not seven coming behind me, he said, "You should not come." And the spirit inside me says that, "Why you are obeying, you go forward." I am telling why I am not obeying on that day. At last, I entered inside. And all the three were standing. After such a limit, I would understand. My soul speak to me. My knowledge is not speaking, but inside it is speaking, everything is closed. And all were dashed each other, it is get inside. Then after I closed my eyes. And both were devastated and amazed. Then after a moment, there is a high speed and I heard a noise. After second, I opened my eyes. And my vehicle was inside the field. Then after I comfort and how great mistake have come. And he said, "Father, you are coming forward, I said, 'You,' but you do not obey." And I said, "Forgive me." And a single second, if I came forward, I would have spoiled my life, or I may be alive, but I have lost my hands. This is the same thing happened to us. And you must slow down your family while you are going with high speed. And for your speed, the husband cannot come with you. You must think and see. You must adjust a little. And he says to him to make a go fair wood and make a three hundred huge long of ark and you could not get such a long length of wood and he made everything and prepared everything well. And for four fifteen feet and he was made everything. And he says that all unclean and clean beast and make them in pairs and make them to enter inside the ark. And it is our desire somehow, we have to gather every people and protect it, we have to go up. Then this ark, the church, you must build it up. And what is, how you are used to build a church? And you may say, "I have given a rod, a steel for this building and if the earthquake comes, anything will go on." And what you have done for the body of the Christ? I got a fan for the church and even crows of people are waiting to give a fan to us. And these are not important, these are little things. For the world, your church to be built up, what you have done. And would do what happened. I have accomplished or prepared every whole ark. If the rain comes and it must float. If the rain falls and the river. And he said to him. And he said, "You bring the pitch and mix pitch it around." That is what we are preaching, this pitch is called a love. If there is no love, there is nothing in him. And this love is a pitch. When it is pitched within and without and only then the ark will float and it will not sink down. Or it will be drowned. So the Bible says, "And many corrupt their faith and they are turning over the whole family." And Noah was the one who accomplished everything. I mean, you how many have done everything? Are you saving money for your children? Are you working for their children? Every day, we are staying in faith and we are going that if the Lord comes to us, what do we do? And you should not say what either is saying to me. And servants have dialogue is different than believers. Well, I don't have wife or children, one day the spirit of divination was shouting in the church. And looking into any hands, I can see their life. I said, "Look into my hands and see." And there were no lines and it is the hands of the. And no showing or no reaping, I cannot not able to gather the bants, but I am the more richest person than you. But what happened there? And Jacob asked, "When I will learn for my family?" And what I will do for my children? I am earning for my father-in-law's house and when I will learn for my family and he is the proper head of that family. You can spend money for your letters, but you are leaping your children in roadside, but you are doing this, that is wrong. And how many you are building a family well? Borrowing the money, you should not help others. And borrowing the money, you are helping others and you should not say like that, you do not get money. If the Lord given your grace to give you help others, you can help us. And first of all, Noah accomplished everything and he completed the ark and ark started to float and it rested upon the mountains of Ararat. Ararat means the holy land. And he landed on that holy land. If you built your church and your family well and you will rest in the holy land. When we look into first Kings, chapter seven, verse forty. And we study about Hiram. And he accomplished everything for the sake of the temple of God. And he said, "Even the showers were not missed and he accomplished and he did everything." Before that, we can see and he completed the whole. At the end, he was, we can see, and Hiram made the levers and the showers and the basins and everything. And Jesus was hanging on the cross. When Jesus was hanging on the cross. And you know all the seven words the Lord uttered on the cross. I am thirst. And this is not the word. And this is a prophecy, he will pronounce while he hung on the cross. According to the prophetical word, I am thirst and he said this word and everything, every words must be fulfilled, so he said that words. House of the Lord, a temple, it shows your personal life. When we look into first Corinthians, chapter three. He are the temple of God. The temple of God is holy. If any deity fell it and his lord will destroy him. We can see this word in book of first Corinthians, chapter three, verse seventeen. And you are the temple of God. And everything must be accomplished, done with perfectly. How the Lord gave a pattern to make the tabernacle in Old Testament, we can see, and the same wise the Lord have given the pattern for the David to make the temple of God. When you read this, you will be amazed. And it is the Lord given as handwriting to the, as a pattern to them. When you look into Chronicles, chapter twenty-eight, verse nineteen. All this said, David, the lords made me understand by writing this hand upon me, even all the words of this pattern. And man must do the holy life, only a pattern is given to us. The Bible says, "And you have to build up the temple, your life in this manner." And you should not go with your own accord and with the temple of God. And according to the word of God, you must build up this temple. And there is a commandment. And transgressing the law, you should not act. And there is a law for the house of God. And what is the law of the house? First of all, you have to maintain the ark that is a family. And seven eleven of Hebrews, what it say? Hebrews eleven seven of Hebrews. And with your own accord, you can design, can build a house. And holiness is a love of the house. Without which holiness, no man shall see God. And worship the Lord, the beauty of holiness. If you go to heaven, you can hear the voice that is holy, holy. He is holy and be holy in all your conversation. How is your temple? And Jesus said, "And you made my house as a tent of caves." And my father's house must be the prayer house. But you made it as a tent of caves. So it will be dashed it, then one should not follow that first. How many are building your house and your life? Your life is so important. If your life should be become proper and you have to consecrate. And there must be consecration in your sleep. There must be consecration in your sleep. There must be consecration in your sleep. There must be consecration in your. And everything, there is a need of consecration. When we look at hundred and thirty-two Sam, verse one to six. And we can see the David and who was making out to the. And surely till I build a temple of God. I will not climb up to the bed of my house. I will not give sleep to my eyes. In his bed, in his eyes and his sleep, he made a consecration to make the built the depth of God. And how you are doing it, you have to give it to your children.
He took the sister and made her to sit. She opened her eyes and she could not see the face but it was so bright. Now we are going to pray. And he started to tell the point. And then after the spirit of prayer came upon you. And what she said? The Lord said twelve to two, you must offer prayers. And she said, I will pray from one to two and slept. Now the Lord took her for twelve thirty but till three thirty he is not offering prayers. And they do not know how the time passed. She could not tell the Lord to stop the prayer because it was, Lord was still in the prayer until three thirty, they were together praying, offering the prayers. Did you have any practice? I hope that Lord had to have, visit every houses. Only if you are lifted up, you will sit. And you must have such spirit of prayer until your end of the race and you have to accomplish a prayer, whatever the prayers are given to you. I hope that Lord had to have, visit every houses. Only if you are lifted up, you will sit. And you must have such spirit of prayer until your end of the race and you have to accomplish a prayer, whatever the prayers are given to you. And just you see how many balance you have that you offered, told him, I will pray after a while. And for how many prayers you did not come? You just account and see. And you are owed to some person and that is different. But the Bible says and you are debtors to for praising. And check your account and how many days you do not offer praising, you check it out and you offer the praising or that you have left. Likewise. And many times that you have consumed that you are not offering. And you slept and you destroyed. And because of the sake of the self, you have destroyed. And you have to close your account. And if you want to close your house and you have to stay here till one fifty years. If you are alive for one fifty years. From today, you make a consecration and renew it. Your prayer life and not all the praise, you have to do it and you have to accomplish everything from today. And Jesus prayed. And the governor gets the money. By five seven of Hebrews says that you offer the praise with strong crying and tears. You know the prayers of Hannah? You know the prayers of Old Testament Hannah and New Testament Hannah? The Old Testament Hannah's prayers only for the sake of the matter. But the Hannah's prayer. It is a prayer which was in dealing with holiness. With the God's holy name be glorified. Nextly, when we look on the Gospel to Saint Luke, chapter two. Two thirty nine of Luke. When you look here, what is mentioned? And according to the laws of Joseph and Mary and they were written back. And this is the life according to the law. You must live according to the law of the law. Performing everything, you must return to your place. And Joseph and Mary written by fulfilling or performing all things according to the law of the law. You must finish your matter then you must go up. One day? And Nehemiah was relieved. And he was a cup bearer. And he was a cup bearer. And he was a cup bearer who was giving. One day he was faint and was to the police. And the king said, you were not well in the presence of God. What was your problem? And he accepted the problem. My land was burnt. When I think about that, my heart is revived and was changed. What to do for it? Will you send, will you clear it? He asked. He replied, if you send me, then I will clear the matter. It is good that you are going and how many days will it take to come return back? And he said, I will take these many days. And these many years will take. And he said, answer. And he asked for minimum twelve years. And you will take this much. And first he told the days of time. Nehemiah, in the second quarter, you will take how long? You will tell me when you will return. How long you will take? Nehemiah, chapter two verse six says that for how long will your journey be and when without return, so it pleases the king to send me and I set him at time. And six twenty days took for him to return back. To do the will of God, you and me, the Lord kept you in this earth and after fulfilling it and we have to return back. For the sake of Jesus or whatever the things the parents have to fulfill according to the law of the law, they performed it and written back the same vice, we have to fulfill everything and we must return back. What does it show? And this shows that we have to work according to the doctrines. And we have to make a life according to the truths and laws. After coming to the church, the doctrines are important for us. How man is need of a backbone and for a man's life, there is a need of the doctrines. And Gospel will save a person and doctrines will save a person. And Gospel will take a person to divineness but the doctrines will perfect a person. The very essential thing is to accomplish the law and they brought a child. And Jesus came by fulfilling of the law. And we must accomplish it. Old Testament, there were ten commandments given but in New Testament, it was changed into two commandments. We must tremble for the word of God then the Lord look unto us. And we are having the spirits of law. And we do not have the laws today. It was over. And right now, we are having the laws of Christ. So eight two of Romans says that it was delivered out from the spirit of life and Christ Jesus made free from the law of sin. And you must do the perfect will of God and must walk according to the laws of God. And these doctrines according to the divineness, godliness of God. And this doctrine is apostolic doctrine. And you must walk accordingly and must fulfill it. Whether God's holy name be glorified. When we look on the book of Exodus, chapter forty, verse thirty three. Then he went to the house, washed himself, washed his feet, washed the clothes, washed the clothes, washed his shoes, washed his shoes. Moses did every work and finished the work. Thirty eight twenty two, when we see. And according to teaching, he have accomplished everything. This tabernacle shows a ministry. Until then his priests did not have any ministry. They don't have ministers. The Lord changed Aaron as a minister. He changed him as a priest. The Lord wanted the children to change as a priest. After this changing, the ministry of a tabernacle king. And there is a ministry to. And there is a ministry to. And to make a sacrifice for everything. And there is a ministry to. And diverse ministries were given on those days. And we all have ministry in this earth. Even those who are married have a ministry. When we look on the book of Leviticus, chapter twenty five. And he says, and all are the servants who came or brought out of the land of Egypt. You are safe. And you cannot come and be with the uniformed to assign ministry. You cannot take part in the full-time ministry. It is not according to the compelsent, but according to Aaron's order, you do not be appointed. So you should not say, I will give the pay. And you are the minister or a part-time servant. I could not do the ministry and you can perform the ministry. I cannot go to the caliphate office and we will do my ministry but if you are staying there. Where you are there, you can do the ministry. You are a minister. Even the times may come and all not but you have to proclaim the word of God. How many are doing the ministry? Everyone is having the ministry, accomplishing the ministry, you must go up. If you do not know the ministry, which is handled in hands and you cannot learn your race victorious. And book of Exodus, chapter forty, verse thirty five says, and everything was second place, as the ground descended and they could not stand on that place. And glory filled that place. What does the ministry give it to you? It may be Sunday school ministry. Or it may be the open-air meeting. Or it may be the hospital ministry. And if you have a ministry to preach in the church, you can do the ministry. And do the ministry which is given to you by God. But you must stand in the law. And some have a question, will you allow us to do the ministry? And some may ask question, is it possible to do the ministry here or not in other places? When you see in Chennai. Her sister was there. And she was a gifted person. And she will take the witchcraft. And she will preach. And she utter prophecy. And what is happening to you, she will tell the real things to them. What happened there? At the same time, when she was a guest lecturer in Hindustan Bible College. When she came to our church. First she did not come. And servant of God visited her. And first they conducted a grand man at the sister's prayer. And they will cast off the demons and they will make it a grand man. And hearing about his sister and the servant of God visited her. And she said, and sister's prayer is conducting. And this is a women's meeting and you should not come inside. And we know to do the ministry, go out. You know what happened there? After a time. And Lord spoke to her. And he spoke according to Ephesians, chapter two. Nineteen twenty and twenty one. And they built upon the foundation of the apostles and prophets, said Jesus Christ himself, it is called sheep corner stone, and you are built and jointly framed together. And she was confused. What was that and Lord? You are doing the ministry but the foundation is in different. You are building a house. But you must construct in foundation. If the Lord asked to her, with whom she was chased away, the same one was in uniform and rebuilt to her. After coming to the church, he had a question. And can I do the ministry anymore? I have to sit silent. And the servant of God called the sister to pass as be honest. Write it down what I say now. He said. And don't. And whenever you get time, you do the ministry. If you are free on Sunday. You must stand in this foundation. Second. And you should not take part in any other places at communion but where the break of late is in apostles. And there are two signs that you are standing in the foundation. And you have to preach a sermon on midnight or. It is not sin. You can inform a word to a servant of God, you can go. In the place where you are offering like this. Because they will give communion. And they will tell the temperature. You should not take it. You should not give it and you should not take it. From whom you have to take it? Hands of the apostles. Keep in your mind and do the ministry and she said, okay, and came up to there. If there is no ministry in the outside and she will come with the Sunday service with all children and she will make a prophecy and it will. As usual, she will go to the Hindustan Bible College and then she will go and make a lecture. And she had eight churches and continued there. Why I am telling this? Do it. It's not wrong. But you have to keep coming to the church and they will come in of the law. Many servants of God are found in this manner. Without doing the ministry, you cannot go to heaven. By trusting you, the Lord has given you the grace, ministry or any kind of power and Bible knowledge and all these things are given to you but you have to use it and do the ministry. In the last week, I said, and teachers pray. When I was an M G R N girl. And I asked him. And he was a director for three states. Wherever he go, any appointment but for Sunday service, he will stay there. And he will take Sunday school. Sunday evening interpretation. And Sunday evening, he will interpret and he will take Sunday school for eleven standard. And if we are getting this post and we will not come to house. But he will come to. He will take Sunday school. And evening, he will interpret. And wife and children, they were all teachers and they will conduct the classes. You can do like that and you have to do the ministry which is able according to your. And take the bills and you go around and you give the bills to them and if possible, take the Sunday school ministry. And you must stand in the foundation and roam around. And your stepping's must be firm on the rock and you have to go around anywhere. You must do the ministry. A brother came from A G church. And he had a spirit of evangelism and he will proclaim the word of God by on the own side, keeping a mic. After coming to this fellowship, he said, I will not do the ministry anymore and I said, you have to do the ministry. I have seen, I have done the ministry like him and it was. It was not a normal person. He will come to visit passage oil. And he will speak in the faith home, as he used to hear what he speaks. He is not a normal, ordinary person. He will call him suddenly. And he used to tell, a person bit me in the skull. And what you are doing now? I am preaching now. And Paul was beaten up and he would be dragged like a dog, even after one hour, he will start to breathe, he is called Sir Paul. But what we are doing? And next day, in the third street, and he started to preach and he used to say, I came to this street and he said, did we preach? And what you say? 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 And Paul was beaten up and he would be dragged like a dog, even after one hour, he will start to breathe, he is called Sir Paul. But what we are doing? And next day, in the third street, and he started to preach and he used to say, I came to this street and he said, did we preach? Will we do like that? And what you say? None of our believers are doing the ministry outside only after finishing the Sunday school, return back to home. Today is the day of God. Whose day is this? When you consider this is the day of rejoicing, I will make you in a happy. May the God's holy name be glorified. When we look on the John, the Gospel, chapter seventeen, verse four. And Jesus finished. I have finished the work which thou gavest to me. What I appointed to me, I have finished the work in the earth. And the Lord appointed certain things for everyone. And you must tell, I have finished. What then happens to you? And I have glorified you. I will glorify you more than it. What the Lord appointed for you and me, when we are finishing it only then the glory is a promise. And this shows fulfilling the will of God. According to Hebrews, chapter one, verse one. And you have to, you can see what is the thing which is. Accept the will of God. And this is the work of the Lord which is good, acceptable. And everyone is having the will of God. If you prefer, I come to do thy will. And we have a will of God. Only if you finish and we can do the. Till you and do, accomplishing this work and this ministry and this church will reside in this earth. If you and I are accomplishing the work and this church will not be anymore this earth. You must accomplish the work. When you accomplish the work which is given to you and you will stand before the things. And without doing everything in half-second way, you cannot go and stand before men. When we look on the book of Joshua, chapter four. According the Lord commanded to them and all the priests and the people will stand before them until the people come to the church. Till the church has taken up and the priests and all the people in the church, they will reside here when you are finishing the will of God and everything will take over. Book of Joshua, chapter four, verse ten. When everything was finished and they will do the. We all will be transformed. In this morning time, the purpose concerning you and me, we have to accomplish everything. And we must be worthy to stand before the son of man. Let us all close our eyes. As the one having done everything, I have designed to stand before you. Till you do everything or accomplish everything, this ministry will wait for you. And this New Testament church will stand. Only then this church will be taken up. When you can see in Revelation, chapter twelve, and the woman beggared a child and the man she was taken up and she was by the way. How many have a desire for accomplishing everything? And have half-second week in a goal. Only the perfectest can see him. And let us all make the holiness of the will of God. How many have this prayer? Those who have a desire of accomplishing everything, have to stand before the Lord as a family. Two minutes. Let anointing comes. Let the power come and fill with you, having done everything. And do everything what you need to do for your family. And what you want to accomplish for the church, you accomplish it. And what you know for your personal secret life, you do it for it. What are the prayers you must offer? You offer all those prayers. And according to the laws, you have to walk after, you must fulfill the. Fulfill the ministry which is given to you by the law. And surrender you to do according to the will of God. And Jesus, the Lord, is going to come soon. And Jesus is coming soon. As the one who accomplished everything, he is coming to visit them. And those who accomplish the prayer like this coming. And the will of God is coming. And we all will be transformed. Either do we do not know whether we are accomplished everything? We are doing. But we are not finished. And if we have accomplished, he has called you. It's something or left behind that we have to do. It may be the family. It may be the church. Or in the ministry. Or in the life. Or in the prayers. Or in the doctrines. Or in the will of God. The Lord gives the anointing, whatever things you did not accomplish, do you accomplish it? Yes, in the abishagat, he was just a winner. Jesus prayed, only keeping this anointing. Only with this anointing was formed. With this anointing, it performed miracles. He was dead. This anointing resurrected him. The anointing helped him to resurrect, helped him everything. This anointing is coming down. And they decide to perfect everything. The anointing to accomplish everything. The anointing to accomplish everything. When you call from this earth. Or when the trumpet blows. Those who say as the one who accomplished having done everything lift up your right hand. If you call me today as one who have accomplished everything I will come to you. If the coming comes I would have finished everything. Such an anointing rests upon me. I need the anointing having done everything. And he that asked will receive from him. Lord he that you brought me in this path. And through the word of God I understood I have not accomplished many things. I have some certainty in some of the verses. I have done something. When I heard the whole preaching and the word of God I had to do more things. Every moment you give me after this. And how many days of the lifespan? Strengthen me to accomplish before it. As the one who have completed everything as a blameless I must stand for you. As the one have done not all I have stand before you. How many have this desire? And for them the Lord is going to best. A one minute. Sagaratiam seidu modikum kirubay. The grace to accomplish everything. Katheri varthelika is stotramanu. Sagaratiam seidu moditola yaarukum nu bahanirka vendu menra devan de aalosani kaistotramanu. Innumi evahil il namkoreva arukaramen vadi purindu valla udhuvisey dabudina listotramanu. Avrana meyalai kumun ekkalam tonikumun sagatay seidu modita orisandika udhuvisey muriya istotramanu. Pidaakumaran barsothaviyanavika istotramanu. Ella magimyaavrikay salidhi istotramanu.